Okay, everybody. So, good evening and welcome this evening to November 10, 2020 Vista Consolidated Meeting. Meeting is now called to order. The meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N-2920. In the event of a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage that is not corrected within 10 minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled evening meetings of the City Council, and any other items on the agenda that the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. So our City Clerk Kathy Valdez, please conduct our roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Please, teacher here when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and Assistant City Attorney Walter Chung.
Okay. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District ordinance 2006-1. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak by clicking the Raise Hand feature on your screen or by pressing *9 on your telephone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the Agenda cover sheet. Staff will be lowering everyone's hand now to start the meeting, and we will announce when to raise your hand to indicate you'd like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. You may only speak on an item once. Public comment is limited to three minutes. So with that, we'll get the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, we have one presentation this evening. I'll have our Housing Manager Sylvia Solis Daniels introduce the presentation. Sylvia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to present to you Exodus and their new social worker. The homelessness strategic plan was adopted on March 10, 2020. The plan adoption authorized staff to begin the implementation of the strategic plan to address homelessness. Staff began soliciting RFPs and selecting contractors to provide the programs and services outlined in the strategic plan. On August 11, the city approved the contract with Exodus Recovery Incorporated. And in September, Exodus began recruitment for a full-time social worker to oversee the City of Vista's strategic plan outreach activities. Exodus has recently hired Emily Ludwig and MSW, who has been working with Exodus for just under three weeks. Over the past few weeks, Emily has begun meeting with community partners, implementing outreach strategies, aligning resources, and initiating the strategic plan, social worker outreach strategy. And I have Emily Ludwig here as well to introduce herself. Emily?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble with the video. Okay, I'm here. So my name's Emily Ludwig, and I have a background as a social worker, doing a lot of outreach in the city of St. Louis, Missouri. I also have a background doing case management. I have my license in clinical social work back in Missouri, but I recently moved to California, and I'm trying to earn reciprocity for that. And despite the roles that I've had, doing psychotherapy, doing diagnostics, and psychosocial assessments and case management, so outreach has been, it's been the thing that has set my soul on fire. And I started out doing outreach, first thing out of undergrad, and it's just something that really, that I adore. And so I'm very excited for this role. I'm eager to collaborate with different providers and engage homeless individuals. Right now, as Sylvia said, I'm working on engagement, building rapport, really trying to be a helper and someone who is extending compassion to homeless individuals. And I'm excited to partner with law enforcement, code enforcement, and of course, try to address the homeless needs in Vista. So, thank you for welcoming me.
Thank you, Emily, and welcome.
Thanks.
Anybody else wants to speak? I'm not seeing any motions, so with that, I will move on to our consent calendar. Recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public, they remove an item by using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing *9 now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And we have 10 consent items this evening, so if any of the City Council members want to remove an item. Insane. No, okay. So then I would look for a motion. Councilmember Green?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I would second that. Mayor?
There is one individual that has raised their hand. I'm sorry, Kathy.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't ask that either, okay.
Let me see which item they'd like to pull, just a moment. Hi. Patrick, which item would you like to have pulled?
I'd like to speak about item C6.
Okay. All right. I'll bring it back on when we get to that, just a moment.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're going to do the balance of the consent calendar, correct?
Yes, I would move to approve the balance of the consent calendar with the exception of item number C6.
Okay.
Go ahead and second that.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Okay. And please have the, cast your votes or have the City Clerk do a roll call vote.
All right. Thank you. Please, teacher vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
So the remaining consent items pass, and we'll talk about C6 next.
Okay, and that will take us to item C6, and we'll hear the public speaker.
Hi. I am Pat Imus. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Thank you for addressing traffic safety in my neighborhood by placing the stop sign here on the corner of Toucan and Boba Link. I support this, but I would like to take this opportunity to address a much larger systemic problem that this council faces with traffic in general in our city. I've been studying this traffic report for the placement of the sign. A stop sign unfortunately is just a Band-Aid on a city's much larger problem. It's a good start, but it doesn't go far enough in addressing the city's safety initiative. A one-way stop sign is not enough to make our neighborhood safe. Stop signs in general seem to be the city engineers and the traffic commissions and the council's strategy for calming traffic through neighborhoods. While these are welcome measures, they are unfortunately insufficient. I hope that you have seen the speed study done in our neighborhood on October 9, but if you have not, here are some of my and my neighbors' concerns. First, using average speed to determine the areas that are safety concerns is an insufficient measure. We had a total of 14 cars going 40 to 44 miles per hour down our neighborhood road. We had 32 cars going 35 to 39 miles per hour down our road, and 141 at 30 to 34 miles per hour through our neighborhoods. That's 187 cars that would take a minimum of 75 feet on nice conditions to stop in an emergency situation. Of those 14 top speeders, 13 of those were in the middle of the day, between noon and 7:00 P.M. And we have these wonderful sidewalks. Thank you so much for putting the sidewalks in. I really appreciate it. Patrick knows that I've been pushing for sidewalks, so I do appreciate that. But unfortunately, they are scary with this type of traffic. That is, one car every five minutes going through our neighborhoods during those hours, that during daylight hours in general, that are 5 miles per hour over the speed limit. Boiling these numbers down to seven cars in one direction and seven cars in another direction at over 40 miles per hour, or just talking about averages, it doesn't negate the fact that we have some dangerous conditions. We put a lot of effort into managing speeds on Santa Fe. We have traffic circles on Santa Fe. We have speed bumps on Santa Fe. We have speed bumps on Mercedale and Fraser Farms. We have blockades on Rose Street. And we have steep dips on West Indian Rock. We have one-way roads, and we have cul-de-sacs.
You have 30 seconds left.
Sure. I'm just asking that the City Council takes this as an opportunity to maybe have a conversation about a direction where we can start with stop signs, but then expand to really address safety in all of our neighborhoods. Thank you so much for listening, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
But then I would look for a motion on C6. I would like to motion.
Yes, I would like to move that we accept staff's recommendation on C6.
Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Green. So City Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Please, teacher vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to our public hearings, and we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is to receive testimony on the 2019 to 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Our public hearing is now open. Housing Programs Manager Sylvia Solis Daniels will provide the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, it may indicate so by using the Raise Hand feature or pressing *9 now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sylvia.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The City of Vista receives annual Community Development Block Grant. CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a recipient of this grant, HUD requires the city to prepare and submit an annual evaluation, known as the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. The CAPER provides the city an opportunity to evaluate its overall progress in carrying out its priorities and specific objectives identified in the city's five-year 2015 to 2019 consolidated plan and subsequent annual action plans. This CAPER summarizes the progress made in program year 2019, which covers the period from July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020, and is the fifth and final year of the consolidated plan.
Sylvia, sorry to interrupt. Kathy is trying to get the PowerPoint presentation up right now, so if we could just hold on one second for her to get that presentation up.
Sure.
Maybe a little longer than a second.
All right, if you're able to maneuver to slide two. Perfect. The community needs, the CAPER requires the city to address how CDBG funds are utilized to address priorities that have been identified in the city's consolidated plan. These needs have been identified as providing emergency shelter, providing crime and delinquency prevention programs, providing support services for seniors, health services, including mental health, emergency assistance, and improvements to community parks, public facilities, and infrastructure. Additionally, the CAPER does include broader goals that are addressed through non-CDBG funding, such as affordable housing. Next slide. Accomplishments. In 2019 to 2020, a total of 3,114 Vista residents received social services through contracts with various nonprofit organizations. This includes emergency shelter, senior services, youth services, fair housing services, health services, mental health, crime awareness and prevention, tenant landlord counseling, and other emergency services. Additionally, the City of Vista engineering staff have designed the installation of nearly 14,000 feet of new sidewalk that will be installed on Gannett and Woodrail Drive. Next slide, slide four. Distribution of resources. The CDBG funds are required to principally support low and moderate income persons. In 2019, 66% of the city's CDBG funds assisted extremely low-income individuals, and very low, 17% assisted low-income individuals. Next slide. Our service providers, per HUD guidelines, a 15... This slide just outlines some of the work that our providers have done. And per our HUD guidelines, a 15-day public review period is required to provide the community an opportunity to review our draft 2019 to 2020 CAPER. The CAPER has been available for public review on the city's website and in the clerk's office since October 26, 2020. To this date, we have received no public comments, and any comments received tonight will be included in the CAPER. This concludes my presentation and the public hearing. I'm available for questions.
Okay, do any of our council members have questions or comments? Or we can go to the members of the public first if you'd like to. I'll go to the public first? Okay. So, Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
I do not have any members that would like to speak on this, so we'll go ahead and close opportunity for public comment on this item.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, and then do I have any council members have questions or comments on this? I think I saw Councilmember Contreras first, and then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much. Yes, you know what? I have a question, and it's something that I reviewed with our City Manager Patrick. Just wanted to get a little bit more clarification on the list from the CAPER. There's a list of different affordable units, and I just wanted to get clarification as to why that's listed in this report, and if any funds were used, what that amount would be per project.
Sure. So the CAPER included goals and needs. And one of the goals is to support affordable housing. No CDBG funds were used to support affordable housing. However, as a city, we can include it as an outcome because we have identified other city resources for affordable housing.
Okay, so that's why it would be included in this report, even if no funding was allocated? Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. With that, I move to close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation on this.
Do we need a motion on that? I don't know if we need a motion. We'll go to Deputy Mayor, and then we'll find out about the motion. If so, that is one.
Yes, you do need to vote on this.
Oh, okay. That was a motion, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you for this update. This is some really good information, and it really outlines what we're doing in our services for our community. And particularly of interest was the 13,957 feet worth of sidewalk that's going to be put up. I know we talk about that a lot in our community. So this is a really great report. Good job, everybody. Thank you for that. And with that, I would go ahead and second the motion.
Okay. And I'm looking to see if I have other speakers. I don't see any, so I'll call the City Clerk to please call on us for a vote. Roll call vote.
Please, teacher vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to our second public hearing. This public hearing is to receive testimony on the establishment of filing and processing fees for applications for renewal, transfer of ownership, relocation, modification, and appeals for cannabis businesses. And so with that, the public hearing is now open. Assistant City Manager Ellie Zimmerman is going to provide the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, it may be indicated so by using the Raise Hand feature or pressing *9 now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and as the mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing to establish a number of permit fees based for applications related to our cannabis businesses. The applications are for renewals of business licenses, transfers, relocations, and relocations with modifications. And we are also recommending establishing a fee for any appeals that might come up. Next slide. Just a quick background refresher. On the next slide. There it is. Just a reminder, we have Measure Z in the City of Vista that was approved by the voters in 2018 that permits up to 11 medical cannabis retailers to operate in the city. And in addition, the City Council's direction in both August and December of 2019 resulted in authorization of enterprise businesses related to distribution manufacturing and, excuse me, testing in the city, as well as allowing our Measure Z retailers to implement a delivery program. Next slide. So it feels like we're always coming back with fees, and part of that has to do with the fact that it's a brand-new industry for the city, and we do need to recover the costs to implement new requests that are allowed under the Vistumuniscode Sections 5.94 and 5.98. But without a fee structure in place, we would either not be recovering our costs or perhaps recovering too much if we tried to align everything under the fees that existed. So at this time, we have a number of new fees that are being recommended, and these are needed to address the upcoming renewals of our Measure Z business medical cannabis licenses, as well as to respond to requests from our Measure Z cannabis retailers in terms of transferring ownership, transferring management, or relocating their locations. And in addition, with the cannabis enterprise businesses that are authorized, we anticipate that there will be a need at some point with those businesses to also request relocations or modifications and potentially ownership or management changes. So this slide does list each of the proposed fees that are before the City Council for consideration this evening. The details for each of the fees are on pages two and three of the Agenda report. The fees are as follows. There's the renewal of registered medical cannabis businesses or the renewal of a cannabis enterprise business at $329. Transferring a medical cannabis business or changing a cannabis enterprise business ownership at $662. Changing the management of a cannabis enterprise business at $269. Relocating either a registered medical cannabis business or relocating and/or modifying the facility or nature of a cannabis enterprise business, which has the largest fee at $2,330. And then establishing an appeal fee, excuse me, of $500. Staff recommends the City Council close the public hearing and adopt the staff-recommended fees, and this completes my report. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so you want to hear from members of the public first? Have any? Everybody? Okay, shaking heads? Okay, so City Clerk, will you see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have a couple of speakers, so we'll go ahead and start with Becky Rap. Go ahead, Becky.
Good evening. My name's Becky Rap. I'm a parent and community member representing the parent community who are deeply concerned with the negative impacts of marijuana dispensaries in our community and especially on our youth. We thank you for discussing increasing retail business expansion fees. Increasing fees can be a crucial part in educating and protecting our community. It is concerning, however, that the city is considering allowing marijuana outlets to transfer ownership with only requiring processing fees. As a concerned community member and one who recognizes the severe consequences surrounding marijuana businesses, it should be mandated that every individual receiving transfer of ownership be thoroughly vetted. Many applicants hide behind LLCs and other organizations unwilling to show full transparency. We, as parents and community members, feel strongly that any individual involved in ownership and operation of a marijuana outlet should be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Kelly McCormick. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good evening. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator and the parent of two teens. City staff has put forth a recommendation on various fees associated with marijuana businesses. These fees are designed to compensate the city for the many staff hours spent on issues like transfers of ownership, relocation requests, and appeals. Staff rightly points out that these requests require a higher level of review by the Planning and Development Services Department. It's important for the public to recognize the time and attention the city must devote to overseeing the marijuana industry. Many cities with permitted marijuana businesses are just now beginning to realize the scope of resources that must be diverted to oversight of businesses that operate in cash without federal legal status and often hiding behind LLC ownership rather than named individuals. In addition, cities are finding there are many other costs which are not accounted for, including costs of law enforcement, drugged driving, workforce issues, and the human cost of damage to mental and physical health. Perhaps money should be earmarked to cover youth marijuana education, especially during this time of stress and anxiety when many young people think alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana are appropriate strategies for coping or for beating boredom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that does it for public comments. So we'll go ahead and close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, do our City Council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Green?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to commend staff, not only on putting this forward, but just on implementing the will of the voters within our city. It's a really tough task, a tough undertaking to get a grasp on, and you guys have done a great job just implementing it and also making sure that we're only collecting for staff time. These are businesses within our community that are paying taxes, that are abiding by the law, and I really appreciate staff making sure that the fees that are charged are relative to the services given. These fees that are on before us today are extremely reasonable, and I feel in line with what it is we're trying to accomplish within our city. So with that, I move that we close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation on this particular item. Thank you.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Does anyone else want to speak? Let's see.
I would like to just follow up on Councilmember Green's comments. Again, thank you, staff. There's been a lot of dedication to cannabis and the implementation of Measure Z. And just like Councilmember Green said, I really want to thank my coworkers and staff for diligently going through everything necessary in order to make this very smooth for our city and for us to be at a point where we really feel like we've done a good job in the implementation and rolling out. And when it does come to staff time, we're making sure that we're following the law and recovering the costs that it takes for our city staff to dot the i's and cross the t's on Measure Z-related business. So I'm very, very happy of, you know, how this has rolled out. But we do get a lot of comments on, you know, how we should be directing some of the sales tax revenue from cannabis, perhaps to youth development, and that is definitely something that I would like to discuss as a council in the future. But with that said, thank you again, and I second this motion.
Councilmember Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one more thing that one of the speakers had hit on as far as the transparency in ownership change. And I just want to make sure that I'm 100% accurate in saying that anytime ownership is transferred, we vet those businesses in the same way we would vet any marijuana business to make sure that they meet all of our guidelines.
Yeah, Councilmember Rap, the purpose of the fee is to recover the staff time to do that vetting, including processing any live... to do that vetting, including processing any live scan requirements and ensuring that the background checks are taken care of. So correct.
Okay. So as far as the community is concerned with a sheltered LLC and us not getting to the bottom of it, that's what the money's for, is for our investigative processes to make sure that they check all the boxes and it's a safe company coming into our community, correct?
Correct. And they do have to go through the same type of program through the Bureau of Cannabis Control at the state level. We won't issue a license if they don't have a state license either.
Perfect. I just want to make sure community members know that we're definitely extremely transparent throughout the process, and we'll make sure that any businesses coming into our town meet all the guidelines necessary for operating. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it.
So we have a motion and a second. And so with that, I don't see anybody else. So I will ask the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Please, if you'd like, I call your name, Mayor Ritter.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Hey, that takes us to our discussion items. And we have two discussion items this evening. The first one is 2021 through 2029 housing element update. City Planner Patsy Chow is going to provide the staff report. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to our city planner, Patsy Chow.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and council members. Patsy Chow, I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development Department, City Planner. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to present to you the Housing Element Update Six Cycle, a discussion on this as we're embarking on the process of updating the housing element. Next slide. So the purpose of the meeting tonight on this particular discussion item is twofold. First, to obtain direction from the city council on the processing of the element, housing element update, and also to receive public input. Public participation is a major component of the housing element update. So that is the second reason why, or one of the reasons why we're here tonight as we continue through the process. We're also going to be talking about the RENA allocation to Vista. And just for members of the public, as to the acronym and what that means is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Essentially, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, they project housing needs for every region in the state of California. And SADAG, which is our regional planning agency, then allocates these needs throughout the county. And so Vista is one of the cities, one of the jurisdictions that we also get an allocation based on what then is called the RENA. So we are here, obviously, to receive public comments. We've sent out mailouts, e-blasts to close to 50 agencies, organizations, and community stakeholders to obtain input on this process. We also had posting on our website, media release, and social media. Also, we've released it through Twitter, Facebook, and Nextdoor. I also like to take this opportunity right now to introduce the Housing Element Team. They are here online today. John Conley, our Director of Community Development Engineering. Michael Ressler, our Principal Planner. We also have Veronica Tam, with Veronica Tam and Associates. And she helped us last time during our Housing Element Update in the fifth cycle. And we also have Brenna Weatherby with Ringcon Consultants. So we're glad to have all of the individuals mentioned to be part of the team that are helping in this particular effort. Next slide, please. So one of the required seven state mandated elements in the general plan is the housing element. And the main purpose of the housing element is really to provide an assessment of what we have in terms of both current and future projected housing needs in the community. In the housing element, we also identified what are the constraints? What are the opportunities in order to meet these housing needs? And in doing so, we provide a strategy that's going to be able to establish goals, policies, and programs for meeting these housing needs. The housing element must be reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development in order to make sure that it's in compliance with state law. Next slide. The main components of the housing element are, as shown on this slide, it starts with the community profile. So we have to have an understanding of the demographics in our community, our housing stock characteristics, and how the variations in terms of renter, owner occupied apartments, condominium, single family, et cetera. We also look at housing constraints in terms of the market constraints, governmental constraints, and obviously environmental constraints as far as production of housing in our community. We look at housing resources. We are fortunate to have our downtown area districts, which helps us greatly meeting housing needs that are identified as part of our RENA allocation. And there is, last but not least, the housing plan that's basically addressing on an eight-year cycle, the six-cycle update, actions and objectives in order to address our housing needs. And in there, we also identify the different types of housing programs that are going to help us get there in meeting our RENA. Next slide. Put, just to put things in perspective, compared to our fifth-cycle housing element, in 2013, 2021, our RENA allocation was a total of 1,374 units. They were distributed among the different income categories as shown on this slide, from very low all the way to above moderate. So now we are looking into the 2021, 2029 cycle, which is the six-cycle update of the housing element. And the total number identified for Vista is 2,561. So it's approximately 1,180 units above what we were allocated last time. That, in part, is because of the time that the projections were being done, there was a high demand housing boom occurring at the time, and also because new legislation was being introduced to require RENA to address overcrowding issues. So you see that jump in the number from what it was to what it is that we're supposed to be looking at in terms of the RENA number for the six-cycle update. The other thing that I wanted to point out and bring your attention to is that the above moderate category shows a dramatically an increase in the number allocated in the category. So from 530 units to 1,356. Now, that is because the, when we look at our percentages of very low and low-income households in the community, we compare ourselves to the county average. And if we have a higher percentage of those particular very low and lower-income households, then we get a lower percentage in terms of units allocated in those categories. And that's why we see a larger number in the above moderate category that is representing this 1,356 increase from what used to be 530 in the last cycle. Next slide. Now, this slide has a lot of numbers, and I'm going to try to hopefully simplify this as best as I can, so stay with me on this. So basically, we're looking at the RENA allocation numbers, which are the very top, the first row of numbers, which is in yellow. And as you can see, there is a very low, low, moderate, and above moderate categories, which then if you add them all together, you get the total allocation for Vista, which is 2,561. We can actually use pending projects, which are projects that are approved, pending in our system as of June 30 of 2020, towards meeting RENA, because the assumption is that these particular units will be constructed within the six-cycle, within that eight-year period from 2021 to 2029. So we separate them into the various income categories. And what we do, I'll just give an example here, is on the very low, for instance, category, we do 515 required RENA number minus 48. Will give us a remaining RENA of 467. So we do that same exercise for every income category. And we do the same exercise for ADA units in terms of what's projected that we can meet within the cycle, in terms of vacant parcels, and in terms of underutilized parcels in the downtown Vista-specific planning area. So when we look at the amount of units that we can create out of these particular categories, it so happens that if we just kind of look down at the last row, where it says remaining RENA, total units, RENA allocation, we're actually doing pretty good in terms of the fact that we have a surplus of 270 very low units compared to what we need to meet in terms of the RENA number, which is 515. So we're producing actually 785, and that's where the 270 surplus comes from. So as we look across on the low and the moderate category, we also have a surplus with the blue numbers in 294 and 228. The only issue here that we see in red, the negative number, is in the above moderate category, which is a minus 237 units. But however, we can satisfy that need by the overage that we see in the moderate and the low category. So either way we look at it, we're actually doing pretty good with the numbers in terms of what we have in our books, in terms of our general plan, and our zoning throughout the city that helps us meet the RENA requirement for the six-cycle, which then, basic conclusion is that we don't need to modify anything in terms of our general plan designations or zoning in order to meet the RENA numbers. Next slide, please. So in our staff report, I've included the maps for, this particular one is the vacant sites throughout the city in terms of the available areas that can support housing to meet the RENA numbers. Next slide. We also have the vacant and underutilized sites that are in the downtown Vista-specific planning area. And you can see in green, the vacant areas throughout downtown, as well as the light orange, which is the underutilized parcels. And just as a notation, in terms of underutilized parcels, it really means parcels that are kind of ripe for development, where the improvements are worth less than the actual value of the land. So that's why they got included as part of our supply that we can actually account for. Next slide. And this particular one shows the plan, the approved and pending projects that we have as of June 30 of 2020, which I mentioned before, the fact that we can't account for these because the expectation and the assumption is that we'll be able to actually produce and have these units constructed within the eight-year cycle of the six-cycle update of the housing element. So you can see all the 25 projects that are listed here throughout the city, and we can account for those, actually. And even if one of these projects should go belly up or something does not kind of, you know, to the point of actually them being built, we can still account for the underlying zone of these particular sites and still take advantage or benefit from the amount of units that would have been produced on the site otherwise. Next slide. So the major notation here out of those numbers that I previously went over is that there is no need for general plan amendments or rezones. So therefore, they are not necessary in order to accommodate the RENA allocation for the six-cycle housing element. And that's pretty good news for City of Vista because we don't have to go through the headache or the concerns associated with those because right now, we have everything that we need sufficient in our books in order to meet the RENA allocation that's been allocated to the City of Vista. Next slide. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Michael Ressler, who's going to talk about the online survey that we put out there and some additional components of the housing element update. So, Michael, turning it over to you.
Patsy, it sounds like Michael's trying to...
Oh, let me see here. Is he trying? I cannot hear him. Can you guys hear him?
Here we go. There he came up. Michael, your audio is not working correctly.
There is, should be a microphone. There you go. No, actually, I cannot hear. Not on my end anyways. Try one more time, Michael. Let me see. Maybe I can go over there and...
Michael, is your computer unmuted? No.
Actually, I will go ahead and cover the slides. I will bring back Michael, if you guys don't mind. Is that okay?
It's okay.
I think he's, all right. So continuing on with the online survey. Basically, we had an online survey that was put out there on September 21st through October the 19th for about a month. And we had the survey results that we got in, about 85 responses received. We had two versions in English and Spanish. And it covered a multitude of topics related to homeownership expenses, what types of housing programs the community would like to see, and locations for new housing as well. So as far as programs and activities, there was a lot of comments provided about, for instance, providing incentives for developments that include low-income or affordable housing, affordable units, and to make sure that we're focusing efforts on rehabilitation of existing housing. One of the interest outcome, interesting outcomes of the survey was in terms of the best locations for housing. And these are kind of actually ranked in the order that we received the most responses on. And the number one on the top, where it says unlocks that are underutilized, that is older buildings that have additional potential, that is what the community, the responders of the survey said. We should focus on that first, and then we should go on next in terms of vacant land that is zoned for housing development, but not yet developed. And third on that category was to look at perhaps commercial locations where you have live-work neighborhoods as a potential location for promoting housing. In terms of top priorities and approaches for housing, new housing to be located where it would have least traffic impact, that was very popular, came up on the top. And the second one was to basically concentrate in smart growth areas where there's transit, where services already exist in there, and also making sure that we're blending in with the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So as far as the housing element objectives, we want to make sure that we're providing adequate planning, obviously, to support and accommodate the housing needs for all the socioeconomic segments of the community, and assisting in the development of affordable housing for lower and moderate-income households as well. And also, as part of the process, we want to make sure that we're removing barriers as far as production of affordable housing development, and also helping preserve and also improving our affordable housing stock. And last but not least, ensuring equal housing opportunities for everyone in the community. Next slide, please. We've received letters from the County of San Diego Health and Human Services Agency and the Vista Community Clinic about wanting to, us to, or staff to ask the city council about smoke-free multifamily housing policy and whether that is something that the city council would like us to include as policy language in the housing element. So when it comes time for discussion, staff will be interested in finding out whether there is an interest for that to be incorporated to the housing element. Next slide. So now, I'd like to turn it over to John Conley, our Director of Community Development Engineering, who's going to be talking about the two topics on this slide related to general plan amendments, rezones, and tiny homes. Turning it over to you, John.
Are we on here?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, sorry. Appreciate it, Patsy. I just wanted to touch base with the council on a couple of issues that are related to the housing element. One is, we have a number of proposed general plan amendments or rezones that have been brought to the staff's attention just in discussions or property owners approaching us looking to discuss this issue, particular to certain sites. In the past, we have brought those to you on individual basis for discussion so that we can cover the proposal and get the council's feedback on those before they go through a formal application process. As you know, it takes a long time to get the application through the planning department and to the council for a final decision. And so we like to bring those for you to discuss and present some perspective to the applicants before they move forward with those requests. And we're going to continue doing that. It's important to note that the applications that are going to come before you are not needed to meet our housing element production. And that's part of the reason I wanted to bring this before you tonight, just to point out that there will be some requests to change zoning or general plans to bring more density into the city. But none of them, at this point, are required to meet our housing element obligations under state law. And so they're at the council's discretion to consider on a case-by-case basis. So we'll continue to bring those to you on a case-by-case basis unless we hear differently tonight. The secondly, second issue is tiny homes. I know we've had some discussions on tiny homes before. It is a housing choice or a housing type that we really kind of prohibit in Vista right now because of the number of different factors. I have discussed this issue with the council members. Um I have discussed this issue with council members individually, and it seems like there is interest. So rather than to get into that issue in detail tonight, I just want to re- uh remind the council that we will bring a a report back in a more comprehensive manner after the first of the year, once we get through the housing element update to discuss tiny homes, the parameters associated with the size of the unit and what's permitted, and then the zoning and where they could go so that we can more comprehensively discuss it, give you some examples for what other jurisdictions have adopted, and then get some feedback from you on what you'd like us to pursue. And that covers those two issues, and I'll go ahead and hand it back to Patsy.
Okay, thanks, John. Uh next slide, please. So just wanted to kind of uh wrap up towards uh just an understanding of where it takes us next, uh next steps on the housing element update process. So we are planning to bring a draft housing element for review uh before the Planning Commission and the City Council. That will be in December of this year and early next year in January. And after that, uh we'll be able to take the uh the draft housing element uh for HCD's review. That'll be sometime in January, February of two thousand and twenty-one. And subsequent to that, hopefully, we get our preliminary review and approval by HCD. Keep our fingers crossed. Uh then we will come back to the Planning Commission and the City Council in the format of public hearings uh to review the uh the housing element for adoption in the month of April, and with the goal of uh that, to meeting the deadline to adopt a housing element on April the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So I know this, there's a lot that's gonna happen between now and then, uh subsequent actions of each other, so uh it's gonna be pretty intense, but um we have it all kind of scheduled out and we're moving forward uh and, but obviously tonight, first step is to basically hear direction uh from the City Council uh as requested. And so with that, next slide is basically to uh reiterate the fact that uh we don't have any needs for general plan amendments or rezones uh being necessary again to accommodate our Reno allocation number for the six-cycle housing element. And again, we're seeking direction from City Council tonight uh from the public. Uh if there are any public comments received tonight, also interested in hearing that as well uh as part of the the information that was shared with you here tonight. Uh we thank you for your attention. Uh we appreciate your time. And with that, we're just gonna open it up. Uh next slide is basically to ask for uh if you have any questions and one more click on that, because I think it's an animated thing, then there you go. And uh basically, questions, comments, and suggestions that uh the council may have, the public, and we're all ears. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Patsy. Um so we're gonna go to um discussion of that, but do you want to have members of the public first, everybody? What do you think? Seems to be lately we want to do that. So, okay, so City Clerk, do you have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yes, I have one, Matthew LaComte. Go ahead, Matthew.
Uh yes, hello, everyone. Uh good to share, uh see you. And belong. Uh this is more of a question about the Reno uh final allocation. Since we're doing such a good job in Vista, do you think we receive like less funds as part of the allocation? Back to you.
So I'm not sure.
I can answer that, Mayor, if you'd like. Uh we don't receive funding um as part of the Reno allocation. It's just an allocation of housing units that we have to zone for. So um the funding for building those units comes from either private developers or affordable housing developers or subsidies from the city, but we don't unfortunately receive any funding from Sandag or the state as part of the Reno process.
Do we have any other speakers?
Um, yes. The next one is Mandy Mae Fitzgerald.
Hello, thank you for uh taking my comment. I just wanted to say thank you very much for that presentation because I know there's been a lot of talk in Vista about why we're building so much, and that explained a lot to me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Uh, yes. Mary Jane Jagnitsky. I apologize if I pronounce that wrong. Go ahead, Mary Jane.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. Um, you know, I I really just want to commend the city. You've really moved the needle a lot. You have been easy to work with. We have Paseo Artist Village under construction. Um affordable housing, the more, y- y- you know, for every person that we build a new apartment, there are at least ten to twelve in line on legitimate wait lists. So it's um, there is a need, and in the last speaker, you know, referenced um trying to understand why, why you're b- building so much. Um and um, at any rate, though, I think that the wisdom you have with your specific plan and really planning out the areas of the city, that makes sense. Um that there are synergies um are are really, has been prudent and wise. And I think you're already seeing those synergies in the downtown area. So um just, you know, I know it's hard, but thank you for all you've already done.
Thank you. And I do not see any other speakers, so we'll go ahead and close opportunity to provide public comment on this item.
Okay, um Deputy Mayor Rigby, do you have any questions or comments on that?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say great job on this. And uh I don't know what, if it's ever worked out this way that we didn't have to rezone something or amend the plan. So I think that um I'm excited about what the prospect is of us meeting our numbers and providing housing at all levels for our residents. So I just want to say thank you to staff for all the work that you put into this. So, thank you.
Councilmember Franklin, do you have any comments or anything?
No, thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate you uh helping us in the community understand uh what our obligations are under the Reno program.
Councilmember Green?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Uh yeah, I just want to thank our planning staff so much. They work so hard down there in the building department. Always got people at the counter throwing things at you, always having to think of creative ways to make things happen. And having to come up with twenty-five hundred and sixty-one units over the next eight years to fit into a box for the state of California is quite an undertaking. So Patsy Chow, Mike Ressler, John Conley, and the whole team, thank you so much for that. One thing that I wanted to make extremely clear is when it comes to affordable and moderate housing in the City of Vista, we're doing our part. We're doing more than our part, and we're gonna continue to do more than our part because we know the need within our community. And the numbers that I took away is that out of those uh, you know, Reno numbers, is it the very low and low-income numbers required was eight hundred and thirty-six units combined. In the City of Vista, per our general plan, we have over fourteen hundred very low or low units ready to go over that eight-year period. So we're providing more than needed there. When it comes to the moderate numbers, three hundred and sixty-nine moderate units were what were required, and we're, we're zoned for five hundred and ninety-seven. So when it comes to what is actually required and what we're providing per that housing study that we did and all the feedback that we had, the biggest need was very low, low, and moderate housing. And in the City of Vista, it looks like we're zoned for nineteen hundred and ninety-seven of those very low, low, or moderate housing units. And the Reno requirement was twelve hundred and five. So we're doing what it takes to meet the needs of our community and meet the demands of our community. And it means a ton to me to be able to provide exactly what the community is asking for. And I do want to make make sure that developers, when they're coming in, know we'd like you to build to our general plan. We worked really hard on the general plan, and per the general plan, we're ready to go, and we're meeting the state requirement. So um I know that was long-winded, but this is a really big report. It's a really big undertaking. And knowing that we're providing what is needed for the citizens and what they're asking for is fantastic. So thank you so much, staff. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes, I just, you know, wanna follow Councilmember Green in saying that um thank you to my coworkers on staff for working on this so diligently that we have, you know, an eight-year uh period. Uh and the state seems to not, not want to pick a fight with Vista right now about this. So I always think that's a great thing. Um, and I just wanted to clarify, did we need to give direction about the smoke-free multifamily housing rezoning proposals for general plan amendments and tiny, and I don't think the tiny home one. But did we need to give any direction for those two?
For the smoke-free housing, yes.
Okay. Sure.
Direction on the smoke-free housing, that'd be great.
Okay, um, so I am in favor of smoke-free multifamily housing. Um I uh do believe that um right when we're looking at our residents here in Vista, um it's not good to have tobacco smoke uh in a multifamily housing situation. So um I am for uh adding that, um and I'll just leave it at, I'll leave it at that to see what my colleagues uh think.
Maybe some of the colleagues want to um chime in on that issue? Do I have anybody? I, I would just tell you that I, I agree with you on that, except I don't want to um limit people to where, I mean, I have a friend who's lives in an apartment that is smoking marijuana down below, and so she said, I can't go in my balcony because it's so s- strong coming from below, and I, I don't think I would like to live in a apartment where there's smoking, but I don't, I don't want to make, I don't want to make the rule from the city. I think it should be made, maybe the housing, the, the owner or the the housing should, should do that. So, does anybody else want to chime in on that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh I would second your uh remarks. I think uh that, you know, I'm a believer in the free market, and I believe that uh if the free market and consumers desire to live in smoke-free housing, uh I think that uh those who own a multifamily housing will choose to write that into their leases. And I believe in allowing people to vote with their feet. Um but if there is uh, you know, maybe there, we, we, you know, we had a huge movement uh that passed Measure Z uh supporting those who are consuming uh, you know, for medicinal purposes. Uh and so, you know, I wonder what that community would think about this. Um you know, I, I just, I think constantly working to limit people's uh freedom within the confines of their own home and telling them what they can and cannot do within their own home uh is not the place of government. And uh though I absolutely agree that nobody should be smoking within the vicinity of children, um and that everybody should be respectful uh of their neighbors, uh I think that that subject matter is the jurisdiction of uh homeowners' associations, of tenants' associations, of landlords, and of the subject of negotiation of leases, and not the rightful place for the heavy hand of the city to intervene and constantly be expanding the scope and authority of the state over the individual lives of the human beings that live uh within the confines of our community. So uh I will be voting now on that.
Do I have any other comments on, oh, Councilmember Green?
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree with uh the mayor and Councilmember Franklin as well. I've reviewed a lot of different lease agreements and rental agreements and seen spoken with different business owners and property owners, and a lot of the uh multifamily units within the city already restrict uh smoking within. I know a lot of uh, you know, multifamily units within Shadow Ridge um that are actually uh owned condominiums. The homeowners' associations have restrictions that say you can't smoke in your house, you can't smoke on your balcony. They literally have to walk out to Shadow Ridge Drive if they want to smoke anything uh in that particular development. So I do feel like that is a right of a property owner. Uh and if somebody doesn't want to live in a complex where they allow smoking, they can find a complex that is a smoke-free complex. Um and each unit is typically a case-by-case basis. Every lease agreement has a section that says, are we smoking, are we not smoking? Is there increased deposit? And uh like Councilmember uh Franklin said, I don't think it's the job of the city. I think the property owners, the developers, and the uh, you know, builders and tenants in general should be able to make that decision for themselves without the city mandating what they can or can't smoke or eat or drink with, within their own private residence. And to the point of the medicinal marijuana, Measure Z that was passed was passed as a medicinal marijuana um, you know, component, and there's a lot of those patients that maybe can't make it out of their houses to go outside to the street to smoke, and they may be in residences that allow smoking for their medicinal purposes. So um once again, just a little overstep, I feel, at the city level and something that I do not support. Thank you.
And I would just like to make another comment. I, I knew that I would be the probably the only council member that would be supportive of smoke-free and multifamily housing. There is a really big difference um between, even when we're discussing cannabis and tobacco and the fact that tobacco, um, you know, it's essentially you're forcing uh someone to breathe that in, and it is detrimental. Whereas um when it comes to, you know, cannabis, I don't know if that's something that we could differentiate. Uh it doesn't seem like there's support anyways, but I just want to make it clear that when we're talking about tobacco, the science is very clear uh that um tobacco smoke is deadly and it will kill. Uh so I'm not sure I agree with an overstepping uh, you know, when we're, we're discussing public safety. Uh but I was pretty much aware um just the way that we break down ideologically that I would probably be the only one in support of this. But I just want to make sure the public knows um that I understand uh that we have individual freedoms um and that, that we have a free market that provides different opportunities. That free market isn't necessarily as um people aren't necessarily as agile um when it comes to housing. So when we discuss the free market and housing, um we already have people having a hard time affording where they live. So, you know, sometimes people just want to be able to uh have a good environment around them, uh and they don't have the ability to uh they don't have, they don't have mobility uh with their housing options. So, thank you very much.
We haven't heard from Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo the comments by the mayor and Councilwoman Franklin and, and Councilwoman Green. Uh I was a smoker for a long time, and I know the benefits of not being a smoker for a long time. But I don't think it's the government's purview to dictate where and when people can smoke. It's a legal product, and until society decides it's not a legal product. So I, I agree with those comments. Uh it would be the purview of the individual housing development uh to have any regulations regarding something like that. But I just think it is outside the purview of government regulation for that one. So I just want to be on the record for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I think, seeing nobody, no other issues, so do you have enough, do you have enough direction? Mr. Conley, do you have enough direction, and Patsy, enough direction from us? Is there anything else you need from us? No? Okay, okay. Okay, then with that, we will move on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Um with that, we're good, we'll move on to our, our second discussion item, which is our um fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty-fourth quarter financial report. Our Finance Director Mike Sylvia will provide the staff report. And if any members of the public want to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Mike Sylvia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh good evening to, to you and our council members. Uh item D two is the city's fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty-fourth quarter financial report, and it provides a summary and comparison of our general fund budget to actual results for the current year as well as the prior year uh ending June thirtieth. Prior to discussing the specifics of the report, it's important to note that the use of the city's structural deficit reserve was not required in fiscal nineteen twenty. Although transient occupancy tax and gas tax were significantly impacted by COVID, a number of other revenues were not as impacted, such as sales tax, Prop L, charges for services uh and franchise fees uh as initially feared by city staff back in the spring. And turning our attention to the specifics in the report, total general fund revenues uh from external sources were ninety-point-one million compared to eighty-six-point-eight in the prior year. That's an increase of about three-point-eight percent. Uh these actual results were also eight-point-three percent uh above budget. Uh the two largest sources of revenue are property taxes and sales taxes, and these sources were up by three-point-eight and one-point-eight uh percent respectively over the prior year. Exhibit two, which is page ten of the agenda report, provides an additional narrative detail of revenue components worth noting. Uh in, in regards to our general fund expenditures, all were within budgetary projections at eighty-one-point-eight million. All departments and divisions came in under their respective operating budgets. Per exhibit four, that's on page fourteen- Per exhibit four, that's on page 14 of the agenda report. Overall, general fund expenditures were 91.8% to budget. Uh, it's important to note that these figures are still subject to auditor adjustment as city staff continue to work with the city's auditors in completing the financial audit and comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal 2019-20. Uh, the report will be presented to city council in February. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. The agenda report includes recommendations for future uses of 3.143 million of available general fund year-end fund balance, and that's detailed on page two of the agenda report. This list includes 1.1 million uh increase to the general fund emergency reserves that will take us to 24.7 million or about 32% of the fiscal year 2020-21 general fund uh expense operating budget. This moves the city closer to the city council policy goal of 35% of budget. And it's also congruent with the Government Finance Officers Association best practices of use of one-time funding and sufficient emergency reserves capacity. Item two is 40,000 uh to be used for redistricting purposes as a result of the 2020 census. Item three is 420,000 for security systems for city facilities. It would initiate an overhaul project for our security at multiple uh city sites. Item four is 1.2 million for the WAVE Water Park Slide Tower and Filters. This funding would address capital repair and replacement needs at the WAVE. Some of these facilities uh that need to be replaced are more than 25 years old. Item five is 20,000 for fire stations, one, five and six software upgrades. Item six, $250,000 to replace the roofs for fire stations two and four. And item seven is $80,000 for uh upcoming labor negotiations. And so in summary, the recommendation for this item is to receive and file the fiscal year 2019 24th quarter financial report and adopt the resolution for the city amending the operating budgets for fiscal year 1920 and 2021 and amending the capital projects budgets for fiscal years 2021 and 2122. I'm available if there are any questions from council or the public.
Okay, so do you, does the council, do you want to discuss it first? Or do you want to do, see if there's any speakers first? Okay, do you want to do speakers first?
Speakers first, please.
First again, okay. All right, so, City Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not have any speakers on this item, so go ahead and close opportunity for comment at this time.
Okay, so um being this is a discussion item, I will just go ahead and I'll, I'll call in the opposite order I did last time. So I'll start with Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't have any questions, but I look forward to my colleagues' questions.
Okay, how about Councilmember Green?
I just want to thank staff uh for the report. I'm super excited that we didn't lose as much money as we thought we were going to lose this year with all of the revenue that we lost. And I'm actually stoked that there's a year-end fund balance, so that's great. Um, I did have questions that I spoke with the city manager about. Anytime there's extra money at the end of the year, I always call it extra money at the end of the year. I like to know what it is we're using it for, why we're using that, and if there's any better use of those funds. And uh, you know, there's some lighting issues in District Two, there's some parks that I'd like to talk about and a lot of things. Um, but those are things that we're going to talk about in the upcoming year. Uh, not necessarily allocated on this particular budget because those funds come from other budgets. But I'm excited that we have money to put into reserves. Uh, the redistricting process apparently uh could change our district lines, so I know that 40,000 is necessary. And uh, I think this is a great use of the year-end fund. So thanks for putting together the report for us, Mr. Sylvia, and uh I look forward to my colleagues as well.
Councilmember Contreras.
Well, thank you so much for putting this together for us. I know it takes um a lot of thinking to figure out how we're going to prioritize all the needs that we have in the city. Um, and just taking a look at, well, first of all, I, I want to also say, just like Councilmember Green, it is absolutely fantastic that we have money left over at the end of the year. And that it's such a substantial amount compared to what we were thinking, especially at the beginning of COVID, right? We were really, really concerned about a drop in revenue and what that would look like. Um, but lo and behold, you know, we have um additional streams of revenue, whether that be cannabis sales tax, whether that be the Wayfair decision. So um, this is really exciting to see that we actually get to have money left over, a substantial amount. It's not going to be left over for too long because we found uh a lot of needs um that we can address immediately. So just taking a look at, you know, making sure that our facility's security system is up to date. Absolutely important. Um, I don't know if the public, if you're taking a look at this document, but um our beloved WAVE Water Park needs uh some upgrades. Um, and those are going to be kind of expensive, but they're going to be around for a long time. So we definitely want to make sure we invest in our current assets um and not defer maintenance, because we all know deferred maintenance only increases the cost of fixing something when you finally get around to doing it. Um, fire station software upgrade for three of our stations and new roofs for two of our fire stations. Um, those uh are essential. Um, and, you know, the redistricting process, now that the 2020 census is finally over, thank you everybody for doing their census. Um, but that means that we also have to look at the districts again um in the population and all that. So, um, those are probably the best uh ones when I look at this list. Um, obviously getting, you know, putting more money in the reserve. Um, we're at 32%, so getting closer uh to that 35% mark, which I'm really excited because that means that we can finally hit that reserve mark and start looking at how else to use um the city's uh revenue. So with that, I just thank you very much, staff.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo my colleagues' sentiments. This is uh good news for the city. We have been very good stewards of the people's money and that's something that's been important to all of us. And I am really excited about the amount of money going into the reserves because a few years ago, we didn't have a lot of money in our reserves. And we were having some issues with that. So the fact that we have made some tough decisions to get us to this point, I'm very proud of the work that staff has done and very proud of the decisions that we have made as a council. And um, these, as uh Councilwoman Contreras had said, these are very important items that are on this list. But I'm just, I'm very happy with where, where we are and I'm very proud of what we've done. And I want to say thank you to staff for a job well done. So, kudos to everybody.
Okay, and I absolutely agree. So with that, we will, I need a motion and a second. I'll make the motion, so the motion's made, can I have a second? Deputy Mayor, seconds. Before me, so. Deputy Mayor, so I have a motion second. Um, so City Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
All right, please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Very good. And that takes us to our oral communications. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. Um, if any member of the public wishes to address the city council, they may do so by um raising, by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. So, City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to provide oral communications?
Well, let's give it just a moment to make sure, but so far I do not see anyone. Oh, we have one. Jim Riegenbach? Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for uh taking my call. Uh, I just want to speak tonight to encourage the council to be more active. And if you are active, tell us about it. Um, I know the, I think the city council meeting, the last one was about 16 minutes long. And um, seems like there's a lot of time we could hear some more from each council member or member about what are some initiatives that you're interested in? What do you guys do outside council meetings? Um, let's hear about it. For example, the homelessness issue. I was uh prompted to look into this a little bit because I saw Councilmember Franklin weighed in on a, on a Nextdoor app post about homelessness this week. Unfortunately, his only response was to blame Gavin Newsom about what the issue was. And here I thought, oh, here's somebody that has some insight into this and could give a little bit more background and plans for the city. So that could be something that we could hear about, hear a bit more about in uh council meetings. What, what's up with the, the homeless strategic plan? It was adopted in March, uh, March 10th. There's supposed to be a task force. They could be presenting at every meeting. There's so much information. Um, is any council member on the task force? What's, what's the status of the task force? Let's, let's hear some updates from them. Uh, there's supposed to be a homelessness prevention program. Applications ended or opened at the end of August. What's, what's the status of that? There's supposed to be a home share coordinator. Who is that? How many home shares is that person coordinated? Uh, there's supposed to be a daytime outreach program. I see on the website that that got delayed up to a year. There's supposed to be government and legislative advocacy happening. Who, who's in charge of that? What's the status of that? And could be here from Exodus tonight because that was, that's another thing. There was supposed to be a full-time social worker giving biannual reports. But again, that, that person came on and nobody had any questions for her. Um, I don't know, maybe homelessness is not a, not an issue, not, not, not that big of an issue and I'm not sure. Um, so anyway, I just want to kind of point out, it would be great to hear a little bit more about uh behind the scenes, what's going on outside the council meet, out, outside the city council meetings and what are some initiatives everybody's interested in. And then one note about that CAPER report. 13,000, 13,000 feet of sidewalk sounds like a lot. But what does that look like in, in terms of blocks? It'd be nice to see some like comparative numbers when uh reports are given like that. So I guess that's all I have for tonight. Um, I'm just looking forward to a little more activity out of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes oral communications. We'll go ahead and close opportunity to speak at this time.
Okay, so with that, I will, um, I have a few little comments here. And first I wanted to um welcome off to Chung Attorney tonight. He's stepping in for our, our attorney, so welcome. Appreciate you coming tonight and covering for um Darrell. Um, the next thing is tomorrow, um is November 11th is Veterans Day. Actually, my father was a veteran of World War II. So we all need to pay tribute to all of our veterans who have so bravely served our country. And I'd also like to honor the dedicated troops currently serving at home and abroad. We are so grateful to them for the sacrifices they've made and continue to make every day. So with that, and I think some of us other ones, I think Deputy Mayor, didn't you have someone that was a veteran in your family also?
Yes, Madam Mayor. My husband is an Army veteran who served in Vietnam. My father was a, a veteran. Uh, my grandfather was a POW in World War II, having been shot down over Italy. So um, every generation of my family has veterans in it. So um, I think of them on these days.
So I, so we're all, we're all very grateful to all, all of those who give us the freedom to, to have our meetings and to do all the things that we do every day, so. Um, and then that, and the other thing I have, I wanted to say a very happy birthday to Councilwoman Jo Green, whose birthday was November 2nd, yay. And to Deputy Mayor Amanda Rigby, whose birthday is this Sunday, November 15th. So happy birthday to each of you. And I will turn that over to our city manager, Patrick Johnson, and maybe he has some announcements.
I do, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to let everybody know that this afternoon uh the County of San Diego announced that they will be moving to the more restrictive tier on the COVID uh response levels, and that is the purple tier. And this is a result of the second consecutive week that uh the county has had positive case numbers over the uh 7% threshold. So under the restrictive uh or the most restrictive purple tier, restaurants and houses of worship will only be able to operate outdoors. This will all start Saturday morning, so midnight, Friday night, Saturday uh will, is when it will start. Uh, indoor gyms and museums uh will have to close. And the maximum, maximum occupancy, excuse me, of indoor retail will be reduced from 50 to 25% capacity. Um, there was a change about six weeks ago or so in the purple tier, and that is that hair salons, barber shops and uh other personal care businesses may remain open as long as they take the uh necessary precautions. And so the county will remain at this level for at least the next three weeks uh through the Thanksgiving holiday. And then uh we'll see if they're able to move back to the red tier depending on the case rate. But um, the city will continue to publicize how to slow the uh, the rate uh in terms of COVID in our community. Um, but that is the news for today. That will start on Saturday. Uh, another coronavirus uh update is that the county is actually opening a new testing site at our Linda Rhodes Community Center. It's actually school district property and then we maintain it in the afternoon. And so that will open on November 11th, which is tomorrow. And uh for more information, the public, if they're interested, can call 211 and get information on the testing site. This will be the first testing site that's in Vista. Um, so that will be good for our residents, uh so they don't have to travel so far. I did want to say, as the mayor said, Veterans Day is tomorrow. That means that uh city offices and the library will be closed. However, there is no delay for trash services with our provider, Edco. And then uh speaking of uh closures, uh this upcoming Thanksgiving, which is November 26th and 27th, uh the city will be closed and trash service will be delayed by one day. Uh, so if your trash is on Thursday, it'll, it'll be delivered Friday. And if it's on uh Friday, it'll, the pickup will be on Saturday. And so um this is the last council meeting in November and our next council meeting will be December 8th. And uh last, but certainly not least, uh I want to wish Ally Zimmerman, our Assistant City Manager, uh the best of luck as she becomes the new city manager in Rockland in Northern California. Uh, as all of you know, Ally's worked for the city for just about 18 years and she's had a tremendous impact on the organization and the city. And I just personally want to thank her for everything she's done. And uh want to say specifically as Assistant City Manager, she's been the best Assistant City Manager I could ever hope for. And uh I can't thank her enough for her, her work and her effort. And uh we're going to miss her, but she's going to do great things in Rockland, so congratulations to Ally. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to say thank you to Ally too. I'm, we're going to miss her. It's been a lot, she's been around for a lot of years and done a lot for our city. And so um we appreciate that and wish her the best of luck in her new position. I, it's like kind of moving on and, but it's a better position for her, so we're, congratulations to her. So if anybody else wants to say anything, I'll, I'll go through the, I'll, I'll go through all of you guys. So let's see, I'll start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to report out from the Sandag Litter Abatement Committee. Uh, we have had a, a few meetings and we have partnered with Caltrans, Surf Rider Foundation and the I Love Clean San Diego groups in these endeavors. And what we've been doing is identifying the sources of the litter that we're seeing countywide. Every, every community throughout the entire county is seeing the extreme increase litter that we have been experiencing here in Vista. And so uh in identifying what the sources of this, these litter issues are coming from, they're starting to create, or we're starting to create programs. And one of them is a, create a Tarp Your Load program because state law does mandate that uh loads in the backs of pickup trucks or whatever type of truck, they have to cover their um open compartment with a tarp to keep things from flying out as they're driving down the road. And as we know very well, few people do that. And a couple of people who do tarp their load don't tarp it correctly and the tarps go flying off and create other problems. So we've started a Tarp Your Load publicity campaign with the I Love a Clean San Diego and Surf Rider Foundation, and then they've been doing events at some of the county dumps and then passing out literature to those who are coming and going from the dumps to let them know about the necessary uh requirements for tarping their load and how to do it properly. Also talking to places that have truck rentals for, you know, the weekend warrior in your, in your yard or garage to know that you rent one of these pickup trucks at Home Depot, you still have to be responsible with whatever it is that you're hauling. We also are working with the law enforcement, the sheriff, the police departments and the highway patrol and all of our towing companies because there is some litter and some, some debris on the roads and the highways from accidents that are not fully cleaned up. So that's caused some problems in areas as well. And um Caltrans, we've talked to Caltrans, and this has been an ongoing discussion for us here at, at our city and I'm sure others as well. There are parts of the city that Caltrans has jurisdiction. There are parts of the city that Caltrans has jurisdiction over because it's next to an on-ramp or off-ramp. And sometimes when there is an issue, Caltrans isn't so quick to go out and clean it up because they're as busy as everybody else. But they're also a little territorial in not wanting the city to go out there. And so in some of these discussions and these meetings that we've had, our District 11 Director, Gustavo Dalarda, has said that Caltrans is going to slack off or not, not slack off, but back off a little bit on the territorial nature of it. And that if cities have something that's going on and what would be their jurisdiction, the cities can go in and take care of it. So that it's not an ongoing or becomes a severe or significant issue in the area. So I was happy to hear that. I, it's, I was sure to tell Gustavo, thank you for that. Um, we also are talking to our trash haulers about how they can help from their end. When they're emptying trash bins into their big giant trucks and they go into the cavity, a lot of times trash goes out or gets blown away in the wind. I do know that they were talking with the trash haulers about maybe a notice in their, their bills for people to please, um, put all of their trash into trash bags, um, not just throw random pieces of trash in your big giant trash bin because that's what ends up on the road a lot as well. But we also are working on an ad campaign and some of us might remember the ad campaign back from the eighties. Give a hoot and don't pollute. Uh, there have been a couple of other ad campaigns over the decades. And it's been a long time since there's been a collective effort, uh, doing a, an ad campaign or public service announcements, PSAs. And we're working on creating a new one and it would go through, uh, radio, newspapers, television, as well as the jurisdictions to use, for instance, in our publication, our Vista. So we are working on, on many different fronts to, uh, address and educate the public on the problem with litter because it is a public health hazard. It can be sometimes a public safety hazard as well. Now the enforcement, because there are every jurisdiction, we all have anti-litter laws. The state has anti-litter laws and tarping laws. And the discussion does turn to enforcement and what would that look like? And a lot of people don't want to immediately jump to enforcement, which would be fines, et cetera. We really want to educate and have a conversation with our communities to get community members to, to really step up and be responsible. I know I see people walking down the street and they'll walk past two trash bins and throw their trash on the ground when they're done eating their sandwich or their candy bar. Uh, and we need people to understand that that's not acceptable. Throw your trash away. And if there is no trash, trash can near you, take it home and throw it away. You know, don't leave no trace is, is something that we talk about in scouting. So what the committee is working on is doing an education campaign, multifaceted and working with community partners in this project before anybody goes to enforcement and fines that would be going out. So I'm really happy with the work that we're doing on that committee and I'm excited to see how this will all roll out. And, um, looking forward to seeing it in our magazine and in our information that we hand out to our community as well. And then as, as the, the mayor already said, um, today, well, today is the Marine Corps birthday. So I want to say happy birthday Marines and especially to our HMLA 369 gunfighters. Go gunfighters, gunfighters rule. And I would be remiss if I did not also say happy birthday Marines to HMLA 469 because that's where my niece is stationed, right next door, the hangar next door. And I want to say happy birthday Marines. It's 245 years that we've had the Marine Corps. And also, as the mayor said, tomorrow is Veterans Day. And I want to wish all of our veterans out there a very happy Veterans Day and thank you for your service. And, and that does include my husband, who's an Army veteran. And, uh, all of our veterans, I know we have some here. I think a couple of veterans here working for us in the city in different positions and then all of our constituents out there. So thank you very much for your service to our community and to our country and happy Veterans Day. So with that, thank you very much to staff for all that you do for us, uh, on every level. You are stellar and I want to also say to Ally, I will miss you having you here, but I am not surprised. You are a rock star and I know that you will do very well in Rockland. So congratulations and I wish you very, very well. So Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for all your reports and everything. Thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
Well, uh, let's see here. Really important, uh, our city manager, Patrick Johnson, did touch upon the new COVID-19 testing site. I just want to talk a little bit more about it because I'm super excited. So, um, a little bit about, you know, what some of us do behind the scenes, right, as council members. This is where we need to put partisanship aside. We need to really have conversations with our, uh, local elected officials at every level of government. I had a, um, honored to have an opportunity to speak with our Assembly Member, Tasha Berner Horvath in, uh, looking, uh, for a testing site, uh, here in the city of Vista. And in particular, where there are, uh, more, uh, what we would consider vulnerable populations. And being familiar with Linda Rhodes', uh, center, um, because I had my town halls there. Uh, that's a location that we looked at. Um, I was able to do a small little focus group with some of my constituents. Um, who, you know, said over and over, yes, a walk-in testing facility is absolutely necessary. No cost. And the fact that a lot of the individuals that I spoke with, um, they walk north Santa Fe a lot, whether it's, uh, for provisions or to get to public transportation or to take their kids to school or whatever the case might be. And so the facility, the testing facility being at the Linda Rhodes', um, center is going to be fantastic for our population that just is not able to access, uh, testing at this moment. There are many obstacles for someone who doesn't have their own form of transportation or that may have other obstacles, uh, in their daily lives. So I am really excited about this. This is a cap, collaboration between the city of Vista, between Vista Unified School District, between, um, San Diego County Health and Human Services Department with Vista Community Clinic. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. So this is definitely a huge asset to the city of Vista and for our residents. And we are always looking to increase public safety and this is a crucial component in the times that we are, uh, in today. Um, the facility, uh, does open tomorrow. It is open seven days a week. It is open from 8:30 AM to 5:30 PM. Again, it is walk-in, no-cost testing. Um, with that said, uh, also tomorrow is Wednesday. So that means it's, uh, trash pickup at Los Duran Park. We meet at 9:00 AM. Uh, and we finish at around 11:30. So we'll be doing that again tomorrow. If you want to join us, just bring a mask, maybe bring some water because we walk about one to two miles. Sometimes three, if we're super ambitious. And yes, we are all going to miss our Assistant City Manager, Ally. She's been such a, uh, integral part of the city of Vista for such a long time. Your fingerprints are on a lot of successes, Ally, and we wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors as city manager, which is super cool. So very much deserved. I hope everybody does have a blessed, uh, Veterans Day. A lot of sacrifice goes into, uh, our day-to-day freedom. We want to make sure that we honor, uh, everybody who has fought, uh, to bless us with freedom. With that said, I hope everybody has a very good night and, um, go Vista. So.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you all my colleagues for a job well done tonight. Thank you for staff for all the work that you put into this. I do want to say again, happy 245th birthday to the United States Marine Corps. It does not get old saying happy birthday to you. Uh, I thank you for the freedoms. Thank you for being the first to fight and protecting our country. Also tomorrow is Veterans Day and without all those who served, we would not have the freedoms that we have today. We would not be able to congregate as a council and make decisions for our community had our freedoms not been fought for. So thank you to everyone that has served. Uh, I also want to commend Councilwoman Contreras on her, uh, COVID, uh, testing facility that she got going for our city there at the Linda Rhodes Center. It was a lot of work, a lot of collaboration. And, uh, thank you so much for working so hard to bring that to the community. That is a big deal. Uh, it was my birthday. The only reason why I say that is I turned 42 and 42 has always been my softball number. All right? And for those of you who know anything about baseball, Jackie Robinson, baby. So I'm gonna let you know. Forty-two, this is my Hall of Fame year. All right? Forty-two Hall of Fame numbers, Hall of Fame year, Joe Green, uh. So I'm a happy man. Thank you, Vista. Thank you, all my colleagues. Thank you, staff. It's been a great meeting. And Ally Zimmer, you will be missed. I appreciate everything you've done for my beloved city. As Councilwoman Contreras said, your fingerprints are all over Vista. You're welcome to come back anytime and spend the money you're making elsewhere in our city. We love your tax revenue. Come on down, Ally. Ah ha. Have a great night, Vista. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
Well, uh, thanks for saving me for last. Um, I want to, I want to thank Jim Regenbach for, uh, coming forward to make comments tonight. Uh, I did, uh, come across some photographs on Nextdoor that are incredibly troubling of the giant, uh, landfills that are building. Those of us who have taken the time to go with the cops deputies into the homeless encampments like I have, and I know several of you have, we've seen the trash that piles up. Uh, something that we have not discussed publicly for some time is the fact that the governor, Gavin Newsom, issued an order preventing us from continuing to clean our cities up. You know, i- in the initial, uh, phases of COVID, perhaps it made sense. I'm still not sure it did. When we're talking about sanitation, generally speaking, picking up the trash and preventing, uh, you know, uh, rancid, uh, conditions from existing, uh, would tend to be the thing you'd want to do to prevent the spread of disease, not allowing, uh, homeless encampments to flourish. But instead, we've been ordered to do something that Governor Newsom would like to make permanent forever. And that is to stop picking up the trash. Uh, and I'm pissed about it. I'm absolutely pissed because our city is being trashed in an unbelievable way. And we are tired of it, you know? There are literally, for me, Vista became San Francisco a couple of weeks ago when somebody defecated, uh, behind my office building. The level of disregard and lack of concern for the absolute, uh, invasion is palpable. It is diminishing our standard of living. For those of us, uh, who live here, who own homes here, who rent here, who own businesses here, we have rights too. We have a right to a clean community and our community should demand it from us. And I'm going to stand up on the behalf of the people I represent and demand it. We cannot allow this situation to continue. And saying that allowing homeless encampments and allowing people to live and to die and, you know, we all get the updates from the Sheriff's Department when a homeless person is found deceased in our city. It's become all too common and it's as if we become indifferent to it. I'm not indifferent to it. I've knocked on the doors and I've spoken to the families of the people whose sons and daughters are living on the streets addicted to heroin and methamphetamine in our community. It's not okay. It's not okay for us as human beings, Republicans or Democrats, to walk past somebody who is either addicted to heroin or methamphetamine or who is mentally ill and say, that's okay for my fellow brother in humanity to live in a ditch. Because you know what? It's not. It's not okay. All right? And if you're a liberal Democrat or a, a conservative Republican, it doesn't matter. You've got an obligation to come forward and ask, how do we get some help for these people? And get them out of a circumstance that is a death sentence for them. If you love them as your fellow human being, as we are commanded to do, then you do not accept the fact that they live in that circumstance. You demand that it is rectified. But instead, we have a state government in this state that is absolutely exacerbating and causing this problem. I have seen this problem absolutely explode and expand by tremendous numbers since I have lived in this city, since I've been on the council. It's not okay. We need to be in there with our cleanup crews, cleaning up the trash, cleaning up the massive piles of bottles of urine because there is no sanitation. And so the number one thing you find when you go into the encampments are giant piles of bottles filled with urine. The flies swarm on it. The people who live there, their bodies are covered with sores. I've been there. I've seen it. Okay? It's not okay. Now, two years ago, this council elevated the homeless issue from a sub-goal of addressing. And this council elevated it to, we have only, we had only seven goals as a city. And we have many sub-goals, but we had seven major goals. We made homelessness in battling and combating the causes of homelessness. We made it its own standout goal. This council has set aside, I believe now more than $4 million to combat and address homelessness. You saw our new social worker tonight, who has just now begun her work at the behest of this council. We've never had a social worker on the city payroll before to reach out to the homeless. Tonight, now we do. We have never before had a homelessness prevention program. We have never before and now do have 10 beds for homeless men. We've never had homeless, uh, beds for homeless men. We do now. This council has spent more hours than I could possibly detail tonight addressing the subject of homelessness. So while it might not be a subject of four hours of debate and discussion during each and every council meeting, I can tell you and every member of this city, everybody who lives here and everybody who works here, that this council has done more to address this subject, to bring this subject to light. And we don't all agree on the causes and we don't all agree on the solutions. But I can tell you, we have spent a lot of time talking about it and I can tell you, it's still not enough. And I can tell you, there's nobody that's more angry about the fact that we haven't solved it than I am. And I'm angry about it because people are suffering. It's people's sons and people's daughters who are addicted to methamphetamine, who are dying of heroin. And we owe it to those people to give them the opportunity to come to sobriety. We owe it to their families to bring those children home to their parents. We owe it to them. It's our duty as a society. If we are not savages, but we are a civilized people, then we will care about those who are least among us. We will not walk past them and claim that it is their right to abuse drugs. Now, what about the mentally ill? The most sickening argument, the most disgusting argument, is that those who are mentally ill deserve to live in a ditch. That's wrong. People who are mentally ill ought to have the full force and weight of our society to lift them up out of those circumstances, to bring them into a place where they have a warm bed, where they have three hot meals, where they are given the medical treatment and supervision that they need. A moral in a just society does not walk past that person and claim that they have a right to live in that circumstance. But that's exactly what the state of California and the leftists have done. Period. It's what they've done. That's it. That's all I've got to say for the moment. But I want everybody else to be just as mad as I am, whether you're a citizen or a council member. Get angry about this issue. Someone is causing a problem in our community and I'm over it. Thank you.
Are we all, are we all still there?
We're here, Mayor. I think your computer froze momentarily.
Mine did?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Councilwoman Contreras.
Um, I know that we're not supposed to be having a discussion at length at this moment since this, since this is oral communications. But I do feel the need to say that the city of Vista did receive a lot of funding from the state to provide services that we probably never would have provided because of the ideological breakdown of this council. So I'm very thankful that the state did provide us funding for intervention and prevention services because I really do not believe that we would have gone in that direction had we not been forced to, um, do so by the stipulations of the funding that we accepted. So I am really thankful for that. Is there a lot more that we can do? Yes. As a council, we could have, uh, allowed for safe overnight parking so that way individuals can have dignity at night. so that way individuals can have dignity at night. I have met quite a few individuals. Actually, as a council, we've received emails from someone named Cheryl, who lives in her vehicle, who has nowhere to sleep at night, and she works during the day. So I am very upset that we have a lot of other strategies that we can implement that we haven't yet that are very low cost. But with that said, our plan to address homelessness is a start, and I look forward to continuing to add strategies that we know work to help both the public and those in our community who are experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
With that.
I've got a follow-up since, since other members are being allowed to follow up. I would like to add the fact that, no, I don't agree with how the homeless prevention funds were spent. I wanted the funds, but I want them to use to help people. And I have very different ideas about how to help them. Hey, we had an agenda item. We have, we have an agenda. We agendized the subject. We put the homeless prevention social worker on.
Councilwoman Franklin, if I could interject, I think we are straying into non-agendized.
I think we agendized that we have a homelessness social worker. Doesn't that give us some latitude to discuss the social worker? That was an agenda item tonight. Isn't that, don't we have the ability to discuss that?
It did during the discussion item. That discussion item's over. We're now into council comments. So I just want to be err on the side of caution that we're going into a give-and-take, a back-and-forth, and that, that brings up problems.
Okay, well, I'm going to conclude my comments by saying we have strong disagreements about the right thing to do. But let us not disagree about the fact that something has to be done and that walking past the problem and ignoring it is morally unjust and unrighteous. And we have to stop doing that. I look forward, and I hope that we have the opportunity. In fact, I'm asking that we have the opportunity to discuss this subject and as free-flowing as we want on the next council agenda because I'm tired of it. I have actually already asked the city manager to bring back the issue about the trash and about picking up the trash. I've asked him to put that on the next council agenda. I look forward to having a conversation with you about it. We owe the people we represent a clean community. If we can't deliver it, they ought to fire every one of us.
Okay, so with that, can we conclude our meeting tonight? It's nice seeing all of you, and have a great rest of your week, okay?
Thanks, everybody.